This is the Newcastle County Council Technology Subcommittee meeting Tuesday, February 4, 2014. The meeting was scheduled to start at 4:00 PM. We're starting at 4:13 PM due to some technical glitches. Eighth floor, City-County building. I'm going to call the meeting to order. My name is Chairman Robert S. Weiner, Chair of the Technology Subcommittee meeting. At this time, because it's an ad hoc committee, we're not going to call roll, but let me just note that there are members of both the public officials and other government officials and the public around the table. So at this point, we'll simply go around and let everyone introduce themselves.
I am Carol Doolin, Councilwoman.
Lou Hinkle, Legislative.
David Grimaldi, CAO.
Daniel Sheerquest, EA.
Mike Kozakowski, Newcastle County Recorder Deeds.
Samuel Guy, Executive Office.
George Hagerty, Land Use.
Tom Peralta, IS Manager.
Fabrice Dubec, Diamond Technologies.
Mark Schubert, Information Systems.
Penrose Hollins, County Councilmember.
Councilman John Cartier, District 8.
Thank you.
Tarek Ben Egan, Legislative.
Anthony DiFiori, Legislative.
Judge Jackson, Legislative.
Jim Boyle, Council Policy Group.
For the record, I'd like to note that, of course, the meeting has an audio track. There's also a video recording which is being made into a DVD which will be made available to council staff to give to their council aides or to anyone else in the public. At this point, I'd like to -- we don't have to make an adoption of the minutes, but council members had a chance to take a look at the previous meeting minutes, which has now been about six months. Do you hear any objections? We'll simply proceed. Items for discussion first would be executive branch technology updates. And the -- under that, I'd like to bring up a couple suggestions which have been made to this committee. All board bios could be posted to the county website with a hyperlink. The bios become public documents when discussed in county council meetings so the public can see who are the citizens who are serving and what their background is. I guess that question would be addressed to CAO.
I think that would be a good idea. Our new platform is going to incorporate bios for different members of the branches of government so we could easily import that.
Very good. And of course, it's made part of the record every time they're introduced into the record when county council considers its appointees, whether or not we're in a ratification position or whether we're in a nomination position. But I believe all the board members go to one branch and then are ratified or approved by the other in some way. Council Doolin, is that correct, to the best of your knowledge, believe?
Yes, consented to by the other branch.
Right. Thank you. The audio tape for boards and commission meetings was another suggestion which was made. CAO, what is your thought about that? It's done sort of as a catch-ass, catch-can basis right now.
We'd like to have it recorded and uploaded to the different web -- sub-websites for the different boards and commissions. Also, as you know, we want to try and get the planning board and board of adjustment to agree to video conferencing as well.
Thank you. The next point, ensuring that all council and administrative meetings are noticed in the paper as well as online. I believe that's already -- the procedure, it's not adopted as red letter law. Just wondering if your law department or as administration, you feel that so as a legacy it ought to be put into a UDC or to a code amendment so that it continues past the good practice which your administration currently does?
I really don't want to get into advising council because I got into some trouble last time I tried to do it.
Yes.
But we would support whatever council was going to do.
Okay. For contact information for the executive offices and assistants to general managers and administrators, along with contact information, what is your thought on that? Public notice for board of adjustment whenever a variance request is made. Legal notice to the last known address of all property owners within 300-foot radius of the property. I believe that's currently the law, Council Doolin.
Correct. Sorry, correct, Council.
There is a notice requirement, and I can't tell you what the width is on the top of my head, but if you'll give me a moment, I'll break it.
It's 300 feet.
300, thank you.
Oh, thank you, George Hagerty from -- that was George Hagerty, Assistant General Manager of Land Use Department. Now, also, another suggestion was contiguous property owners. General Manager Hagerty, is that the current law? The contiguous general manager -- contiguous property owners are also sent notice?
Sent notice, yes.
That's what I thought. I'm just reading my script. So the proposal to expand the contact list, I see some logistical challenges with this because we don't always have the community civic association leadership. But what would be the administration's thought on that? To include the civic association as well, even though we don't always have the civic association, particularly if it's not a maintenance corporation?
I think that as we roll out the new website and the new platform, a lot of this stuff is going to become a lot more interactive. So I think it'll be easier. They would have the request to sign up for those updates, but that's easily accomplished.
I think that's a very, very good point, that they would have to voluntarily agree to sign up. They might be giving the information for one purpose but not for another. Workshop meetings posted on the web. Currently, council rule 7.2.3 states that all notices, agendas, and minutes of the meetings described in Rule 7.2.2 also shall be placed on the Newcastle County website as additional notice to the public. It does not require notice in the news journal. Lou, would you care to elaborate on that?
Just that the meeting notices aren't always posted in the paper. However, the -- what is posted in the paper is usually the -- what was discussed and what occurred at the meeting afterwards. But some of the workshop meetings aren't required by council rule to be posted in a newspaper or notice.
So you're saying here, and we talked about this before, agenda and minutes. Some of the boards and commissions, CAO Grimaldi, post agendas and meeting minutes, some don't. What's your feeling about having a consistent policy with the extent that the administration is -- has any advisory or control function over the boards and commissions?
We would certainly support transparency and consistency across the board.
Thank you. So we'll have to take a look at it at a subsequent meeting, whether that could be done by administrative fiat or by amendment with the legislative and executive branch working together.
It may be their own rules.
And it may be required to, in which case, we could talk to the various board attorneys and board chairs and try to do something which might be a legacy change. And then each webpage should be current and up to date. Obviously, we need a webmaster that stays on top of it because sometimes changes occur. We used to have a person under the previous administration who was assigned to do that or a couple people. Again, I look to the administration. What do you think of the idea and could you allocate someone to be in charge of that?
I think it's going to be done departmentally because every department will have different things that they're going to want to update on their webpage. So I think each department will assign somebody. I think there's PIOs that exist in several departments. Perhaps we can allocate their time to do that.
Very good. That's all I had on executive branch technology updates. I'd like to ask council persons if they had any questions or comments.
None here.
Yes.
I think the --
Councilman Cartier.
It's very important to maintain the notice when requests for variances come forward. A lot of the communities I serve do not have civic associations, so you're really going to not get any notification. It's important to, you know, the adjacent property owners and people, you know, property owners within 300 feet get that notice. The ones most directly impacted are going to have the most interest in, you know, commenting or being part of any type of variance hearing on that issue.
Thank you. George, a question concerning apartment complexes. Do the -- does the ownership of the apartment complex, or let's say we have a rental unit, are they notified if they're contiguous or within 300 feet?
The owners would be notified. The individual tenants may not be.
Owners, yes. Members of the public, any discussion questions on executive branch technology updates? Hearing none. Tweaks in our land use department webpage. There have been a number of changes that have been made over the couple of years since our technology committee's been working with land use. George, I know probably some new ones will get -- are prepared to come online as we move to a new basis for our website, but would you like to talk about what the land use department has done in terms of notice and public documents postings? Is the SLD Form 1 posted yet?
I'd have to check on it, Bob, to be honest with you. I'm here to kind of take notes and understand this.
Okay.
Piece, and there are several things that have been done, but rather than be on the record and say something was, it wasn't, I'd rather, if you have something you'd like me to look at and report back.
Okay.
I'd be glad to do that for you.
Great. When we have our meeting in two weeks from now, on the 18th of February at 1:00 PM, rather than hitting you cold, General Manager Hagerty, could you -- perhaps you could be prepared then to address?
I sure will.
Great, thank you. And anything else on land use from council members? General public? Seeing none, now we're moving on to the executive branch technology update which we're returning to. And this would be that the administration is about to launch a new county website that they've been working on for over a year. County council's had an opportunity to be updated about it, but today we're going to see for the first time an actual demonstration of the new county website. It will address a number of the issues that council members have been complaining about over the years and constituents, and that is that the old system was a patch-on-patch system, and it simply had so many additions and add-ons that it wasn't as user-friendly as it might be, and hadn't been completely revamped in quite a long time. So we have not only CAO Grimaldi, but also Daniel Sheerquest from IS and John.
Mark.
Mark.
Mark Schubert.
See, John was close. Mark Schubert from IS, and then Tom Peralta from IS that'll be able to walk us through these changes. And so with that, I'd like to turn the agenda over to CAO Grimaldi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, before you proceed, I don't know if you can be mic'd over there or not, but can that wire go over there?
I don't think so.
If we undo this string?
If you just beat up the guitar. Yeah. About a year ago, I came to your committee and explained some of the initiatives regarding technology that the administration's going to put forth. We've made significant investments in technology thus far. Public safety, as you know, we've invested predictive analytics, which has already paid significant dividends, also with the help of Mr. Kozakowski's office. We have launched the MyPD app for the first time. Newcastle County has a mobile app where citizens can report prior to submit tips to the local police department. We've asked EMS to do the same thing. Within the next year, they're going to roll out their own app. In special services, we have CityWorks, which is a new platform that also uses predictive analytics. So where we've spent a lot of money for emergency maintenance, for example, the new software will be able to predict which pieces of equipment are scheduled to meet the end of their life, and we'll be able to proactively fix that before they become emergencies. Also with CityWorks, you'll be able to have them on your mobile phone, an app, so that when you see graffiti, if you see a pottle, you can take your app, snap a picture of it, it'll go right to our department with the GIS already encoded in it, and we could respond accordingly. That's coming this year. Some of the things we're more -- we're really excited about is the new website. As I understand it, the website of the county hasn't been upgraded in quite some time, I think about a decade. The new website is much more user-friendly. And if you -- the first thing is, if you reload it, you'll get different background pictures, which are ever-changing. And what we did is, we looked at it from an end-user perspective. So we're the old website, you know, you have to click on departments and special services, but you know, what we find is members of the public don't necessarily know what special services does. So we have the new how-do-I. So from the end-user's perspective, you know, how do you go for code violation tickets or go to the register with Deeds Office Legislative Branch? So it's much more user-friendly. We also have this new section which will have our press releases, executive orders, proclamations. As you know, we've ramped up the Newcastle County TV station, which will also be linked here. So if you -- be able to apply for county jobs, see as they come up. But if you go to the homepage, one of the more interesting things, and you touched on it before, is that now members of the public will be able to sign up for updates on their topic of interest. So you can scroll down here. You can sign up to get updates either to your cellphone or through email for executive proclamations. Anytime somebody's added to a board or commission, you can have public safety updates. All of this is here, and you can also sign up for land use things. So that if a new project is coming somewhere in your area or an area of interest, you can type in the area, you'll get an update as it comes through. The other thing that we're excited about, which is already ready for implementation, is the new GIS. Unfortunately, our GIS guy's not here today, but this one is much more interactive. If you scroll down to land use, you'll be able to see throughout the county things like pending developments, approved developments. You can have board of adjustment variances that date back to 1950, all here and easily accessible. You'll have the plan maps, zoning maps. It's broken down by educational district, political districts. And again, this is just -- will be rolled out with the website in the coming month or two. The other thing is, we are going to steal a bit from the city of Sacramento. California's really leading the charge in open government platforms. We have contracted the same company in Sacramento uses called Junar. And what they do is, they have this platform which allows us to put all this data on the internet for the public to access, to be publicly accessible. So for example, if you wanted to have a GIS map of all the county parklands, it would all be there. You can have all the county budgets for this and previous years, and it'll show up in charts, how much the general fund, sewer fund, all that'll be broken up for the public. But the good thing is that this also comes with an API feature, which means that we can literally do, as California does, whole hackathons, right? So developers can get together and use this data to create apps. So you can literally create apps for, you know, figure out where the nearest parkland is, or an app to look at the county budget. All of that'll be available through this new API platform. This is a project that is on -- is already started and should be completed, I guess, in the next three months.
Potentially. It could be a little bit quicker, it might be a little bit longer, but it's already, like you said, the plans are started.
Great, great. So those are the three big initiatives that we have coming down the pike in the next couple of months. Any questions about?
Just, I'm so pleased that you picked the city of Sacramento. I'm active in the National Association of Counties, and I go to the technology meetings, and the city of Sacramento is not only in the opinion of Newcastle County, but the opinion of all 3,000 counties in the country, one of the leaders. And they're -- they chair a number of our committees because the best practices are being emulated in other counties as well. As far as the API platform and the GIS system, at a later technology committee meeting, could I ask you and/or your staff to come and drill down into, to the extent that you're not able to do today, to drill down and to show in more detail how we could launch our own app, for example? Or use the various GIS components, for example?
Sure. Yeah, I think there's two separate things. So you could use the GIS to drill down for even property sales, all that'll be on the GIS map. But because we're tying into this open data platform that not only has the mapping, but this API feature, anybody that knows how to develop a mobile app, and other municipalities have held hackathons to develop mobile apps, will be able to create an app for different things, like being able to pay your bill online or go to figure out where the closest park is or where the next county community event is.
I'm excited. While I'm thinking, why don't I ask my fellow council persons if they have any questions or if you'd like to see demonstrated any component of the website?
I don't have any questions. I think it is very exciting. I think it's, you know, pretty, taking us to the next generation. It's valuable information, and it gives the public an opportunity to focus on things that they're personally interested in. So I think it's very exciting, yeah.
Thanks. Thank you, Councilman Hollins. Councilman Cartier.
I think one of the things that I encounter interacting with my constituents, there is -- has been complaints about the current county website not being very user-friendly and hard to access information out of. So I think it's a long overdue update, and I'm glad we're emulating a best practice in Sacramento, and it'll go a long way to, you know, addressing that part of our population that is very facile with, you know, computer, interactive computer technology.
And CAO, I'd just like to say, as you know, I'm passionate about graffiti, and, you know, we have the Citizens Anti-Graffiti Brigade, but this will be a great tool for those of us that are trying to describe to county code enforcement where graffiti is. It'll be so much simpler now that the photos that we send in will be GIS-based, and you'll be able to recognize where it is simply by our photo being sent in. When will this launch? In part or in full?
The CityWorks app is actually, I think it's already implemented in the engineering division. Full implementation throughout special services within the next three or four months.
So CityWorks is ready to launch? It's just poised to launch?
They've already launched it in engineering thus far, but it'll go through the rest of special services for the next few months.
Next few months. So, and three to four months for the total planned update system?
Yes.
Great. We look forward to updates regularly. I'd like to open it up to the public as well for any questions. Particularly interested in how the various row offices will be able to use this new website.
Well, this is really other than the fact that my --
Why don't you indent yourself, Michael?
So Mike Kozakowski, Recorder Deeds. When I was talking to Lisa Shalom, one of my supervisors, and she was informing me of the upgrades, I haven't really had an opportunity to, this would be the first time I've actually been able to review it, but anytime that you're able to provide the community with a plethora of information, it's, the community will do well because they're able to get ahead and not only access information, but also be able to utilize in a way their tax dollars working for them of getting to the source that they're looking for. And that seems to be not only for us, our council, but on our executive branch of government, but also the row offices, to inform and educate. And this will definitely, moving in that direction. It's good to see.
That's very good. Councilman Cartier.
The county executive should have the county flag behind him. Isn't that the state of Delaware flag?
Oh. All right, we've got to change that.
Thank you.
No offense to the state of Delaware.
We have a member of the public. For the record, would you please identify yourself and what organization you're with?
Thank you. Fabrice Dubec with Diamond Technologies. One question around a civilian who takes a picture and sands a damaged wall or graffiti of some sort. What kind of response can that citizen, you know, expect? Or is it going to be done where it's going to be transparent to that user and communication's going to be done by doing the work that is to be done? Like in response to the citizen's requests?
Mr. Dubec, that's a -- that is not a simple question as it might sound. From having looked at the concept of jurisdiction, it depends first on whether it's on private property or public property, and then whose public property. If it's on private property, it is the responsibility of the private property owner to remove the graffiti, even though he or she or it may not have caused it. And the county code enforcement office would be responsible for making sure that occurs. If it's on public property, if it's in the State Department of Transportation right-of-way, it's the state of Delaware which is responsible. If it's on county property, it would be the county. Typically, it's in the state right-of-way. However, the state has made it quite clear that its budget is minimal, budgetary constraints, and so five years ago, working with some good citizens, I launched the Citizens Anti-Graffiti Brigade. It's a public-private partnership. We work with protocols established with the state of Delaware, DelDOT, State Police, State Insurance Commissioner, County Attorney, and other departments to reach protocols which determine where and when and how we should remove them. For example, we'll never go onto an interstate highway. Our feet never leave the ground. We don't climb up on railroad trestles. But to the extent that our tippy toes will allow and the extension of our paintbrush will permit, we'll get that paint or whitewash, and we'll declare victory as far as we can reach. After that, we simply are not mandated to trespass on railroad property or other dangerous interstate property. I hope, I mean, that was just a quick answer, I could go into more depth.
That's good.
Okay, thank you for the question. Are there any other questions or comments or suggestions?
So if I could just add one thing. This right now is a map of development activity, so the green would represent the approved plans while the orange is representing pending plans. And on any of these, any member of the public can drill down and just click right on the property.
Would you demonstrate?
Just like that. You'll get the owner's name, parcel number, subdivision, and then you'll be able to go zoom right into the parcel details on a separate link. So everything is interactive on the website. Yep.
Lou Hinkle, aide-de-council Weiner.
I think this is where some of the tweaks that Bob was asking you about, George, may be explained because some of the additions that were put up on the website, the old website, under project plans were from App Extender, and it wasn't easily accessible in the past. But now with this, I mean, that basically, it's not necessary because it's already up there on the new website. So I think that may not have been necessitated, which you have to do, but I think that answers the question for us.
Yes. David, while you're here, if God permits, would you drill down on either the GIS system for zoning or some of the other links so that we can see?
All right, let me do this. Okay, so for example, now these purple areas are vacant residential. That's all mapped out throughout the county.
How could that be used in terms of economic redevelopment or parkland plan?
Well, you're thinking what I'm thinking, right?
Yes.
So, you know, you, for example, you see if there's a block that has a lot of vacant residential, perhaps they're behind other taxes.
residential, perhaps they're behind on their taxes, so maybe that could be incorporated in economic development plan, take back some of those parts as a redevelopment area.
Through, either through rewards or carrot and stick approach as the City of Philadelphia and the City of Wilmington have done?
Yep. Let's see. If we, all right, so now we've got border adjustment. And this, these are all the variances that were given. The green is after 1997 UDC and orange is before then, and it goes all the way back to 1950s. All the information is just to click away. Click on it, you'll get all the information, the year it was done.
So I would gather 1954, the establishment of zoning.
Yep.
Councilman Cartier?
Can you show all the historic zoning overlays and accounting from that?
Let's see.
Yep.
So these are parcels of historic.
Can you drill down and zoom to and then also click on the parcel details?
You can do that with any, yeah.
Why don't you tick one and let's show everyone what it looks like.
So that is the Hickman Blacksmith Shop and House.
Can you zoom into that? The zip link, zoom to. Okay, so that doesn't really have another hyperlink with more information, but I think-
Well, here you can get the owner's name, the address.
Oh.
The parcel details.
And then you go, now I'll take you right here.
And then these hyperlinks, why don't you just show that? We take them for granted, but show us what's on that page that you just clicked off of. At the top, you have the view map, view tax bills, billing sketches.
Tax bills. You've got plans that were submitted, when the property is transferred, how much taxes paid, year built, 1900.
What's under some of those other links there? Zoning, civic, political?
Let me just get out of any of this. So these are the historic districts. I think that's what Councilman Cartier was asking.
What's the code, color code?
These are all the oldest zoning districts, some of them are, you know, NC 5, I guess that's pre-UDC.
That's, yeah, that would be 5,000 square feet.
Commercial, regional. So this is the entire zoning map of the county.
This is a Google-based system?
Actually, it's, it's, it looks like Google Maps. It was done by Esri, a vendor that the US suggested.
NICO, yes.
Yeah, the NICO. So you can look at hometown overlays.
Can you have multiple overlays as you're looking at it?
Yes. And we also think that this will also help in economic development because it's a lot easier when you have all this information on, to do some real economic development or master planning.
Then you can actually show the actual satellite view as well. It's another overlay you can add.
Yes. Do you know where the, where you-
Yeah, on the top right is the base map. If you change your base map, there's three different styles. You could do the imagery in the bottom layer.
After the imagery.
There's different base maps. I think if it's okay, we'll have GIS come in, if it's okay with the chairman and executive side, if we can have them come in to show a little bit more detail, because on here, they can, we can show you exactly what bus route to go from point A to point B. It'll give you a list of the actual route that you could take. You could find child daycare, your closest in your range. I mean, the limits of this are really bound by nothing. Anything that's in the area that can be mapped is here.
And for example, we just broke this down by civic association. So you can break the county down by civic association regions.
Very nice. I like the idea of mapping out transit orientation and walkability and bikability because not everyone wants to or can afford a single occupancy vehicle.
Sure.
And we should do planning with that in mind, a health impact assessment, which is one of the items that our office and Land Use is working on now.
Excellent.
So we have trains, hospitals, that's a good public service layer. What else is there? Veterans centers, libraries, parks, rides, airports, runways, bus routes, environmental-
Yeah, I think, I'm not sure if we have it up yet, but I think we're also going to put up the sewer maps.
Really?
Because that should be publicable. So I think that that'll help in economic development as well, knowing where it is, where it's going.
Yes.
Instead of, you know, we find now that a lot of this information just comes to the few people that know to ask for.
Right.
Rather than it's just administered to the public. It may help in economic development as well.
I'd like to thank the groundwork that's been put into this by special services and Land Use, which has been taking boxes of old archived sewer lines for the last while and putting them into electronic system. I know George-
300,000 subdocuments.
300,000 subdocuments. This was a Herculean task.
And if I can mention, because I left out Land Use. Land Use is also moving with technological upgrades. They're going to be trying to create a virtual one-stop shop because we have this bifurcated system between DelDOT and Fire Marshal even. If we create a virtual one-stop shop where it's collaborative, so plans submitted, everybody sees it at once, when comments are made, everybody sees the comments at once and stuff going from different jurisdictions. It'll all be there. And we took a page out of New York City, also has the, they'll have electronic plan submissions. You'll be able to submit them online and you'll be able to meet with your planner virtually. So you could go on Skype and instead of having to come into the county government, you can go on Skype and you can meet with your planner as well.
And the planner can bring up the plan. Oftentimes, for example, an applicant may want to meet with a district council person. The district councilman person may decide that they would rather not meet with the applicant and his attorney unless the Land Use Department is present or virtually present, along with a representative from the civic associations or in the area. This could allow this without necessarily having to get together physically.
Yep.
That's exciting. And saves a lot of money.
At least parking.
And parking too.
Right.
I'm more excited than I was before. Can we go to the whole political link? I'm dying to know what's underneath there, up above.
There you go. You can break it down by space center. They were presented county council district. Right now, it's under council district, so you'll actually see the name of the council. Penrose Hollins, Cartier, Wyner.
And then you can drill down to get a close-up look.
Yep. And you can overlay that, for example, with state center.
Could you capture a portion of it and email it digitally to a civic association? That's a question for above CAO's pay grade. I'm looking at the Daniel Shear quest.
It's definitely something that we can do. You can always just do a print screen of what you're looking at.
Yes.
So to answer your question, yes, that can be done by default. There are some ways that we would want to maybe just copy a link and send a link over. That, I think, is already done. But to answer your question, you could. If you have a scenario, we have a whole bunch of overlays in the exact format you want to show a constituent, you could definitely take a screenshot and send it over.
Okay. Now, what's the linkage with the City of Wilmington, City of Newcastle, and City of Newark and other major cities and hablets and incorporated towns? Is there any integration or are we just taking the information that's available currently? I don't know the answer, who I would direct that question to.
I think maybe if we knew what exactly that information was that you're changing.
Well, for example, City Wilmington, I guess all of the public services that are available outside, in Newcastle County, whether it's incorporated or not, would still be available in terms of bus routes and public facilities.
Yeah, the bus routes, that's already incorporated. I think we'd have to, I think next week when we have our GIS team here, I think it might be a little bit easier to know the ins and outs of the particular questions that you're asking, but to answer your, on a broader spectrum, the bus routes do go from county into cities and vice versa.
Right. Just important to remember that we're all citizens of Newcastle County, whether we live in Wilmington or not, many times folks do forget that, so.
But I think on that point, I noticed that there was a link for Loma, and I was wondering, is that, that's a district in Wilmington, it's L-O-M-A?
No, it's a letter of map amendment.
Oh, okay. I was wondering about that because there's another, you know, so is that Loma?
That's a map, floodplain map amendment.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's either a Lomar map revision or a map amendment.
Okay, all right.
He brings up a different option.
Sometimes people-
Yeah, if you put, bring him in to anywhere, just click anywhere that you want.
Sometimes people don't think they should be in a flood zone.
Mm-hmm.
And if so, they have to get an approved letter of map amendment or a letter of map revision after an engineer takes a look at it. Unfortunately, as water development keeps developing upstream, folks are surprised to find out that the new federal definition of floodplain and flood fringe is broader and therefore what the federal government is saying is we're passing on the actual cost of building or rebuilding in the floodplain to the actual user. At one point, it was 90% on the taxpayer. It's now 90% on the user and the federal government wanted to remove the remaining 10% and there was some pushback from governments across the country using the argument that the community at large benefits from development in the floodplain, if you want to call it benefit. But there is a benefit not only to the immediate neighbor, but to the community at large to maintaining something that already was built. Let's say a historic mill along the banks of an Arden Creek, for example. So there has to be a policy balance and that's a public decision that ultimately will rest in Congress and I know at NICO, we're wrestling with that issue internally ourselves. Got a question? Identify yourself again, please.
Fabrice Dubec. In regards to the data being updated or changed, so some data may not be changed right away. If you talk about Land Use, some might take a couple weeks, months maybe before you can update the data, but if you talk about bus routing and stuff that are more imminent to the citizen, how fast can you get that data changed and how relevant can it become available to those people?
I think it's going to be charged to each department from what I heard from the CAO and then it's simply a matter of human resources available and how quickly the changes come in, but I'll throw to the CAO to add any embellishment?
I agree. Some of the things like bus routes, which you would imagine wouldn't change all that often, wouldn't need necessarily be updated, but Land Use, applications, certainly that would need to be updated manually. I would imagine turnaround time of a week or two would be reasonable to get in the system.
And then, of course, some of these links, correct me if I'm wrong, Daniel, are actually external, like it might be to a DART or a DAST web page so that we're not really having to update it ourselves there doing that?
That is correct. Example would be with the bus route. Bus routes are all created by DART, so if you're, if there's an update, they would update it, the link would remain the same or we would redirect to the new link, but they would provide that update. So to answer your question, some of it is pertaining to how quick the city or the state could even update their process.
Perfect. Yes, I'd like to recognize Michael Kozakowski.
Yes, one of the things that I do recall back in 2007, Pat Souzy was my recommendation to attend the State of Delaware Advisory Committee on Tax Ditches. And of course, I explained to the committee that in order for the Recorder Deeds Office to amend any document or to add any information, we had to be ordered by the Superior Court. So the dynamics and the protocol was put together. Now, there's, I think somewhere around 250, 300 tax ditches that are located in Newcastle County. Would that be available on the site if someone wanted to access the tax ditch?
Would anyone like-
Because they, we do have them recorded now under miscellaneous.
Yes, they're on the miscellaneous docket in the Recorder Deeds. I know from my title searching days and we actually have a Denrec-assigned tax ditch person by the name of Thomas Bartholmay. And he works in Newcastle County, works for Denrec, who's responsible for those tax ditches and there are regular appeals to the court. So it's a very important part of the liens that one has to do when they're doing planning and maintenance as well. Those tax ditches have to be maintained.
Yes.
Great. So it's a question that we need to get an answer on, but it's on the record.
Okay. Thank you.
Which might already be answered. We would just need, well, we'll just verify.
Yeah, just look into it.
Absolutely. Great.
Thank you.
Maide Lou Henkel will be doing meeting minutes, which will be posted as well on the nccde.org website, as all committees do, under County Council until this new website is launched, in which case it'll still be under the County Council link, CAO.
Yeah.
And there's an audio link. Perhaps someday there'll be a video link too and the taxpayers, citizens will be able to see and hear what public business is taking place. That would be my hope, but it's a decision for later time. Any other questions or comments?
I guess then we'd have to not only look, but definitely be on our best behavior. We have the video and audio.
Theoretically, yes.
Maybe hard to do.
Yes. Passions do run deep. Are there any other questions or comments? It's now 5:00. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
If I may, I just want to-
One other thing by CAO Grimaldi.
I just want to thank the Department of IAS. They've done a phenomenal job over the last year. They've really worked hard. They're bringing the county into the future, they're running all cylinders, and they've been doing phenomenal, so I want to thank everyone.
And I want to thank CAO and also General Manager Fogarty for allowing personnel to be here today. I think it's been a wonderful meeting. And just as a historic footnote, you know, it's nice to have a video record as well as an audio record of an entire county council meeting. Councilman Cartier, did you have a question or comment?
I just want to applaud IAS and the administration for working on this very important initiative because I can tell you that, you know, the website and its functions that we currently have were really showing their age and it's really time to get into a much more interactive format and I think it will show, you know, the public that we serve that, you know, we're making this government ever more accessible and user-friendly.
And transparent, if I may add. Councilman Hollis, do you have any remarks before we close?
Well, I would join the CAO and my colleagues here that, in my thanking the IAS Department. I mean, this is a lot of work, obviously, that's gone into this, but I think it's going to be beneficial not only to the government, but to the people we serve. So, great job, good beginning, and look forward to going forward.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So you want to announce the next meeting?
Our next meeting will be Tuesday, February 18th, at 1:30 PM in the City-City Building on the eighth floor in this conference room. It's open to the public as all council meetings are. It'll be published and advertised and I invite you all to come back, of course, with the blessings of CAO and with General Manager Fogarty. It's now 5:02 PM. May I now entertain a motion to adjourn?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Motion?
So move.
Second.
Second. All three of us, are we in favor? I. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.